Ladies and gentlemen, it is 6:30 and we'll go ahead and begin this meeting. I'll ask that all members of council please check in as present and note for the record that all members of city council are present and accounted for this evening. So if you will, we'll begin this meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. I ask that you please stand if you're able and join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item up on this evening's agenda is the consent agenda and that consists of only one item, that's the council meeting minutes from the meeting of October 19th, 2020. Is there any council member that would like to remove anything from the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'll call for a motion.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion to approve the consent agenda by Councilman Merkel and I believe it was Councilman Burnett for the second. Any comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please vote yes, otherwise vote no. Councilwoman Richard. And it does pass unanimously. Just wanted to keep you in suspense. So we'll move on to the next portion of tonight's meeting, which is the old business portion of tonight's agenda and that also consists of only one item and that item is PH-20-13 United Unified, excuse me, Development Code Text Amendments, Animal Hospital, Small Animal. And this is the second reading, so there will be no public comment in this second reading.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to recuse myself. My law firm does business with the applicant, I've discovered, so I'm going to recuse myself from this matter.
Thank you, sir. We'll call you back when this is done. So Ms. Cook, do you mind taking the floor on this item? Stephen, I appreciate it if you'll read the ordinance at the appropriate moment.
Mayor and council, there have been no changes since the first reading, but I'll answer any questions that you have.
Any questions from council at this time? Stephen, if you don't mind.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is an ordinance to amend Article 2 of the Unified Development Code of the City of Alpharetta, Georgia to add animal hospital, small animal as a conditional use in the OI. It's only the district to appeal completely the ordinance, citizen for other purposes.
Thanks, sir. Since this is the second reading, there'll be no public comment on this item. If we have any other questions from council? Seeing none, I'll call for a motion at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll offer motion to approve PH-20-13 Unified Development Code Text Amendments, Animal Hospital, Small Animal Hospital, and the ordinance is read by Mr. Jones.
Second.
We have a motion to approve PH-20-13 Unified Development Code Text Amendments, Animal Hospital, Small Animal, as read by City Attorney Stephen Jones. Is there any discussion from council? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving that motion, please vote yes, otherwise vote no. And it does pass unanimously. So that'll wrap up the old business portion of this evening's meeting and we'll move on to the public hearing items. We do have four public hearing items, first of which will be V-20-11 Sitgo 174 North Main Street Variance. Corrector Cook, you have the floor again.
The first item before you is shown to you on the screen. The applicant is General Convenience Store LLC requesting a variance to eliminate the required 10-foot landscape strip on commercial property located in the downtown overlay. Property is a Sitgo gas station which proposes to reconfigure the gas pump canopy as a result of impacts from the GDOT North Main Street project. And you probably know where this is located, but let me put a picture of the front of that up here. The property and surrounding properties are Zoned C1. Current C1 does not allow a gas station, but this is of course a legal non-conforming use. Variance is requested from Unified Development Code Subsection 3.2.8, Landscape Strips to eliminate the required 10-foot landscape strip along North Main Street. The strip and existing gas pump canopy, which consists of four gas pumps under a canopy which is perpendicular to North Main Street, is being impacted by GDOT's roadway project on North Main Street. The additional right-of-way, which is approximately 11 to 12 feet, and easements, which is about seven feet, acquired by GDOT, will result in the removal of the landscape strip and two gas pumps nearest North Main Street. And the application talks about a widening project. Of course, this is a pedestrian improvement project. It's to encourage more pedestrian activity, is to build the wider sidewalks along Main If the applicant were to utilize the remaining canopy and the two gas pumps, a variance would not be necessary to totally eliminate the landscape strip. And let me put the site plan up here for you. So here's the existing layout with the GDOT easements that are needed. You can see, it's kind of hard to see, but here are the two gas pumps that would need to be eliminated. So they would still have two that would be remaining. The applicant is proposing to turn those. Instead of perpendicular, it would be parallel and create, have three gas pumps along the front. And they did include some different turning movement diagrams in your packet. I'll put some, I'll put those up real quick to show you. So this is a diagram that shows what it would, what the car 19-foot in length, what that turning radius would look like. This is with the landscape strip, I mean, the landscape strip along the front. It is a very tight turn here, although they're showing that the turn can be created. It's very close, hugging the building and of course, hugging the sidewalk without landscaping. And again, the GDOT project is a pedestrian project, so it's encouraging more people that are walking in the downtown. Here is the other turning radius that they provided. This has the beauty strip, which then of course, shows that those movements could not be made. So the first one that I showed you was without the beauty strip. This is if they had to include an eight-foot beauty strip and it shows that the building, that the turns could not be accommodated. And of course, that's by adding an additional pump, not by using the two existing pumps that they have. According to the applicant's letter of intent, the loss of two gas pumps has created an economic hardship. However, the applicant has already been compensated for the right-of-way and easements acquired and any negative damages to the remaining property. The applicant provided this series of auto turns. There's other ones that were included within your packet. However, we have concerns even with the, with the three, as they're showing, that are parallel to the roadway, even without the landscape strip. The turns are very difficult. They again, would hug the building. And there was also been no kind of a buffer between pedestrians. And I'll put that one back up here. So hugging both sides and of course, with this configuration, you're looking at a 19-foot, a longer car than usual, but if you had a trailer that's attached or anything that's a larger truck, it's going to make it even more difficult. Of course, when you have this small 11-foot lane here between the gas pumps and the sidewalk, very difficult if somebody, you know, doesn't go the right way or they're coming in different ways. Lot of concerns. The property received approval of land disturbance permit in 2001. The plan depicted a total of 13 parking spaces at that time, of which two, and I'll put that back up here, were handicap spaces, which were provided at the front of the convenience store. Based on a recent visit of the property, the property was not developed per the approved LDP plan and only has 10 parking spaces. The reconfiguration of the gas pump canopy results in the elimination of the handicap spaces that are at the front of the convenience store, so they would have to put that behind the building. Current parking requirements in the downtown would require two spaces at each gas pump plus one space per 250 square feet of retail associated with the convenience store. So the total, this parking that is required with the three pumps and the existing square footage would be 18 parking spaces, which, which don't exist on the property. The applicant does propose to remodel the exterior of the convenience store as well as construct a new gas canopy, and that was included in your packet and will require design review board, review and approval. That's the proposed front of the building. And then with the canopy, they're only proposing to take the, to change it until, to a silver canopy, but not many other changes proposed. When looking at a variance, the City of Alpharetta uses Article 4, which is Section 4.5.3, Different Criteria. And when you look at number one, there are extraordinary and exceptional conditions pertaining to the particular piece of property in question because of its size, shape or topography. Our response is that the variance to eliminate the landscape strip is necessary only because the applicant proposes to reconfigure the gas pumps in order to allow a third gas pump. If the applicant were to utilize two gas pumps, a variance would not be required that totally eliminated the landscape strip. You still have a landscape strip and accommodate the two pumps. We reviewed the applicant's proposal and find it cannot, we cannot support the variance request to eliminate the landscape strip along North Point, North Main Street. The applicant's proposal lacks financial data or market analysis to support the claim of economic hardship and also lacks an alternative design. When we looked at the, it was the pharmacy, the old McDonald's on Main Street, they're actually removing pavement to install more landscaping, so they took out some parking spaces to install landscaping. And of course, we did not hear a request to remove that landscape strip, so they were required to incorporate that. Granting the variance would negatively impact aesthetics along North Main Street and could result in safety issues due to the conflicts between vehicles assessing the gas pumps and the flow of traffic on North Main Street. Elimination of the landscape strip would also result in a loss of protective barrier between the new multi-use sidewalks along North Main Street and vehicular areas surrounding the gas pumps, which could lead to conflicts between vehicles and pedestrian and of course, cyclists. And as I stated before, recent variance is considered along Main Street and as well as others that are going through the similar process. Staff has met with them to let them know we did not support a reduction in the landscape strip, however, that would be up to council. Also, the hardship that's created by GDOT, GDOT's Highway 9 project should have been compensated by GDOT, including impacts to the business after the taking of the property. Because of these concerns, I should note also, they, they went through the citizen participation plan. They did notify owners within 500 feet, but they did not have any comments, no comments were received. They also attended the CZIM on September 9th and there were no public comments at that time. Because of these concerns noted, we are recommending denial of V-2011 Sitgo 174 North Main Street variance request to eliminate the 10-foot landscape strip, but we have included conditions for your consideration if you want to approve the request. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer those.
Do we have any questions from council at this time? Thank you, ma'am.
Yes.
Would the applicant like to come forward at this time?
Yes, Mayor.
Could please just state your name and address for the record.
Yes, my name is Paul Mitchell. I'm an attorney at the law firm Miles Hands for Talent, 202 Triple Gap Road, Cumming, I'm here this evening on behalf of the applicant, General Convenience Store LLC. Do you mind? Thank you. And we have reviewed staff's comments and staff's comments are well taken, so we do have some additional information to update the mayor and council with this evening. The first piece of new information that I would like to distribute if I can is a letter received today from Sitgo regarding the financial impact, thank you so much, regarding the financial impact of losing the gas pumps, as was explained moments ago, with the GDOT right-of-way acquisition. Two of the four gas pumps are being removed. The two pumps nearest North Main Street will be removed shortly, leaving two pumps at the, at the property, at the subject property. And as this letter from Sitgo received today shows, in addition to a letter that we, that we received last week from the marketer slash jobber who helps to negotiate supply contracts for this gas station, without at least three gas pumps, it's simply not economically viable. And so that is part of our argument this evening and what I hope we can persuade you on, is that there is a true economic hardship in this instance. So let me just simply recap some of the information that's already been discussed tonight and that's in your packet. So the Sitgo station, it's located just south of the CVS store, which is just south of Mayfield, the current zoning category is C1. The proposed use will remain the same. Of course, the, the code requires a 10-foot landscape strip. And one thing I, I would like to mention is that we're not asking for a variance to what's already a uniformly applied landscape strip. I think as you go up and down Main Street, what you see is that property owners are doing the best they can to provide landscaping. And I know the code doesn't ask you to do the best you can, the code requires you to do 10 feet. And so tonight, what we're asking for is to allow us to do the best we can, which isn't 10 feet, but with, with a two-foot landscape strip, we can make some of these things work. Now what we've shown in the application is a zero-foot landscape strip, because in order to achieve a zero-foot landscape strip, you have to put the three gas pumps all parallel to, to Main Street. And then we've shown the auto turn analysis, that turning radius analysis, that if there is any landscape strip at all, you can't turn in between those pumps. The reason why we can certainly, at least possibly accommodate a two-foot landscape strip is if we are able to, to angle those pumps or configure them slightly differently so they're not all in a straight line. But the other thing I, I want to mention is that even without any, even with just keeping the two pumps that will be, that will remain after GDOT takes, GDOT will take two, there'll be two left, even with those two, a variance will still be, will still be required of two feet, in other words, so at maximum, an eight-foot, an eight-foot landscape strip. Otherwise, there won't be enough room to have the 11-foot drive lane in between the sidewalk and the pumps. So I'll, I'll show that in these slides. And you've already seen photographs of the subject property. And the, the good news is, is if the applicant is able to get a variance to the landscape strip requirement and keep three pumps, there'll be sufficient revenue generated by the store to renovate the store. And so we have renderings, again, this was in the, in the packet materials, but I'll show it now. This is a, the, the front of the store. And here's the, the north side of the store, the back and the south side. Again, on the, the current site plan shows where GDOT is taking a significant part of the front of the property here. And that without any variance at all to landscape strip requirement, the owner can't have three pumps and have the cars safely maneuver, but with the variance, they can safely maneuver. But again, as I just mentioned this evening, we've looked at it again and if we angle these pumps or reconfigure them slightly from, from this configuration, the, the owner does expect to be able to have three pumps and still allow for a two-foot landscape strip and to, to address some of the concerns about the proximity between pedestrians on the sidewalk and cars maneuvering around these pumps. It is expected at this point that there'll be between two and three feet of grass on GDOT's side. And so if we have a, an additional two feet of landscaping, you have a four to five-foot The variance criteria again, have, have, have been reviewed and I would simply like to talk about some of the, the effects on this property and why we filed this application. The first variance criteria asks whether there are exceptional conditions on this property, and there are. The exceptional conditions here is that we have a very narrow property and the, the most valuable part of that property is being taken as part of this project. And so there really isn't much flexibility to, to move the building or to reconfigure where the pumps are. We've done the best we can, but it does create an exceptional condition and does create a hardship. Again, two pumps will be gone soon. The two remaining pumps will still require at least a two-foot variance, in other words, a maximum eight-foot landscape strip, just to use the two that are still there. But if there's only two, the gas station won't be economically viable and that's why we're asking for variance to allow for three pumps. The next variance criteria asks whether there's an unnecessary, an unnecessary hardship to the applicant. In this case, it's not just unnecessary, I do think it's extreme. Again, if there was a 10-foot landscape strip, then the applicant would lose not only the two pumps he's been compensated for, but also the remaining two pumps. And I do want to speak to the compensation from GDOT. Although GDOT did, GDOT has already acquired the land, they, GDOT paid for the land that it acquired, but it did not pay consequential damages sufficient to make up for the, the whole loss of value to the property. And again, in the, the letter that it just distributed and in the other letter that was distributed, I believe it was uploaded on Friday, we, we do have these two letters stating that our, our contracts are essentially imperil without three pumps on the site. The next variance criteria, conditions that are peculiar to this property, again, with the GDOT project, it is making it difficult to reconfigure the site in any other way because of the size and shape of the property. And then the next question, is there any substantial detriment to the public by granting this variance? We don't believe there is. If, if there's more room to turn and operate vehicles on the property, certainly it's easier to operate them more safely. The vehicles operating on the property are already moving quite slowly, you know, five miles an hour or so. There's no current landscaping strip on this property, so there's, there's no landscaping that will be removed. And again, if, if, if we're allowed to have a two-foot landscape strip in addition to GDOT's two to three feet, there will still be some landscaping there. The, the property owner has been there for almost 20 years and for that entire time has maintained GDOT's side of the, of the right-of-way, the, the grass and everything that's there. The owner is certainly agreeable to continuing to do that. And very importantly, when you think about beautifying Alpharetta and certainly looking at the downtown, if the convenience store is able to maintain, able to remain economically viable, there will be sufficient revenue to enhance the exterior aesthetics, which we've shown those renderings. And those are my comments. I think there, there were a couple of other things that I wanted to address very briefly. Canopy colors, that, that is something that, there is flexibility for. I know in the staff recommendations, they, they wanted a, a monochromatic and I believe it was a, it was a tan or a brown color. There certainly, there's flexibility with canopy colors and design. And although there wasn't financial data provided when we initially filed this application, that's the reason why we've supplemented with these two letters to show that there would be a financial hardship. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Councilman Binder.
I guess my main question is, why are we seeing this now as opposed to when they were talking to GDOT? So it seems like there's a financial hardship, but it was created by the transaction between the applicant and GDOT.
That's an excellent question. I, I could tell you that, that was an issue that, that came up prior to my involvement with this. I, I think that again, all, all I can really say is that there, there was compensation for the, for the pumps that were taken. There was, when that compensation included compensation for that strip of property along North Main Street. In my opinion, there was nothing close to compensation for the, for the business as a going concern or what we would call consequential damages.
And then, what kind of landscaping can I expect for a two-foot landscape strip?
Sure.
I don't know what staff is for requirement for our tree scape or what we're having there, but is it going to be something similar? Two feet's not, not a lot.
It's not much. We would certainly do, do the most we could with it. Unfortunately, because there, there is a permanent easement that, that GDOT has there, I know staff wanted some tree plantings, that wouldn't be possible, but shrubs would certainly be possible. Obviously, grass, grass is already there. There are some, certainly there's possibilities there. And I know in the staff recommending conditions, there's other things you can do to bring some more landscaping, to bring some more greenery in front of a building. And I know staff has recommended conditions about that, about putting things up, up along the facade of the building, things like that.
Did you, did you bring a landscaping design plan for your proposed two-foot?
We, we don't, we don't have a plan this evening, no.
Okay. And then my final question is, is it two foot, two foot or nothing for you or?
It, for, yes, yes. As, as far as the viability for the, for the store, it needs to have three pumps and, and two feet is the most we can do for the three pumps, but obviously, some, something's better than nothing, but what we're asking for is a two-foot landscape strip. Something like that.
Mayor Proton Mitchell.
Thank you. Have you all considered, I'm no engineer, but I'm just wanting to ask this. Have you considered an angled drive-in so that you don't have to do the turning motion where you have an entrance maybe on the drugstore side and then an exit on the other? Has that been considered?
There, there has been consideration to that and I, I think what, what one of the issues have been, has been trying to get some feedback from GDOT of any possible median or something like that, that might influence how traffic would most naturally flow into the site. But that, that's certainly something that we've looked at and that's why a landscape strip of two feet could work because they could angle them, which would require some, a little bit of reconfiguring from, from the, the plan that we showed, that we showed tonight.
All right. This is something I'm really torn on because I think a lot of Alpharetta citizens use Sitgo downtown and it's great having a gas station downtown and I really want to see how we can work with you all to get, make this happen. I'm not sure we can reach a conclusion tonight, but... I'm not sure we can reach a conclusion tonight, but I think your presence in our downtown is important to a lot of citizens. So, thank you.
Well, thank you very much. And, and to follow up on that, we certainly would be happy to keep the conversation going if, if the council would, would, you know, like some more information before taking a vote.
Any other questions from council at this time?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Cobb, do we have any public comment cards on this item?
We do not, sir.
But if there's anyone here that would like to come forward and to speak on this variance application by Sitgo, please come forward at this time. Seeing no one, we will close public comment. Do I have a motion from council?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I will offer a motion to deny V dash 20 dash 11, Sitgo 174 North Main Street variance.
Have a motion to deny V dash 20 dash 11, Sitgo 174 North Main Street variance. Second, a motion by Councilwoman Richards, second by Councilman Binder. Councilman Binder?
I don't know if it's appropriate, but can I ask the applicant another question, just to follow up what he said last?
Sure. No problem. Would the applicant like to come forward and receive any more questions?
You, you mentioned that you'd be willing to take more time to work with staff and bring something forward?
Yes, sir.
Is that, how much time do you think you would need? And how much time do you think you would need?
Yes, but...
I think he wants to consult with his client.
But we could certainly have something for your next regular meeting.
All right.
So we have a motion and a second.
Mr. Mayor, I'll offer a motion to table.
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Burnett to table and a second by Mayor Pro Tim Mitchell. There is no discussion about a motion to table. So all those in favor of tabling the item. Now, Councilwoman Burnett, I don't believe you specified for how long did you intend to? You don't have to, I just wanted to make sure you had not intended to.
I don't.
So, okay. So it is just a motion to table until this council decides to take it back off the table. All those in favor of that motion, please vote yes. Otherwise, please vote no. And the motion does pass 5-2. So the next item up on tonight's public hearing agenda is item MP dash 20 dash 04 CU dash 20 dash 07. This is Veterinary Emergency Group, 2725 Old Milton Parkway. And Mr. Woodman, you have the floor.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to recuse myself. The owner of the property has a business relationship with my firm.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The next item before you is a master plan amendment and conditional use to allow a small animal hospital in a 4,590 square foot suite within an existing commercial building. The amendment, an amendment is requested to the Parkway 400 master plan to add the use to Pod A and a conditional use requesting to allow the use for veterinary and emergency group. Have the location map up on the overhead. This location is right across from Avalon at 2725 Old Milton Parkway. Again, that's Suite A. Property is owned O&amp;I Office Institutional, was developed in 2008 with a one-story 9,500 square foot building. Half the building is occupied by Alpharetta Eye Clinic, who is also the owner of this building. Applicant proposes to use the other half of the building, which was formerly occupied by Aomi Hibachi and Sushi. Surrounding properties are zoned O&amp;I to the south and east. That's a courtyard by Marriott and the Fifth Third Bank. MU mixed use to the north, Avalon, and C2 and O&amp;I to the west, which is the Atwater and the Even Hotel. Use is permitted by right in the light industrial district and it's as a conditional use in the AG, CUP, C1, C2, PSC, and now the O&amp;I zoning district. Just to orient you with the location, this is the street view. So we're at Avalon, looking across Old Milton Parkway to the existing building. Veterinary Emergency Group is an emergency vet business. They serve cats and dogs primarily, but they also serve household pets such as birds and reptiles. They have several locations in the United States and currently expanding in Georgia. Business operates 24/7 with their peak hours typically between 6:00 PM and midnight. Business does not perform routine or preventative care, and they do not board animals. The applicant anticipates four to five employees at the location. And this is the survey of the property or site plan. Old Milton Parkway, their point of access off of Old Milton Parkway. And you can see the Alpharetta Eye Clinic is in the suite on the south side of the property and the proposed veterinary clinic would go in the other suite. Access to this building is through the front door. However, they also do have secured rear access. Applicant did submit a letter from the property owner, again, who owns the Alpharetta Eye Clinic, stating that the walls would be soundproofed. Did some research on other animal hospitals approved in the city. And we do have six animal hospitals currently operating in the city. However, we do not have any emergency veterinary hospitals. The nearest emergency vets are located in City of Roswell and in South Forsyth. This item was shown to the public on the September 9th Community Zoning Information Meeting. There were no public comments. And staff reviewed the applicant's proposal and finds that the master plan amendment and conditional use do not conflict with the established criteria. The proposed use would be compatible with surrounding use, surrounding uses in other locations for this type of business, which are situated along commercial corridors. The use would generate fewer PM peak hour trips than the previous restaurant use, and there are no emergency vets currently operating in the city. Item was considered at the October 1st Planning Commission meeting. There were no public comments. And after discussion, Planning Commission recommended unanimous approval, subject to the following conditions. One, add animal hospital, small animals to Pod A of the Parkway 400 master plan as a conditional use. Two, animal hospital, small animals shall be added as a conditional use at 2725 Old Milton Parkway, Suite A, and limited to no more than 4,590 square feet. Three, the conditional use approval shall be limited to veterinary emergency group. No additional animal hospital, small animal businesses or subleasing shall be permitted within the approved space. Four, the business shall be permitted to operate 24 hours a day, seven days per week. Five, boarding of animals is limited to short-term care incidental to hospital, the hospital use. Six, the interior tenant improvements associated with Suite A shall include wall soundproofing. Per the letter from Thomas E. Air dated 7/16/2020, that was part of the applicant's submittal package. And seven, mobile resources supporting the business, such as a mobile MRI or X-ray, shall not be parked between the building and the street. And the applicant did not propose any such mobile vehicle at the location, but we know that sometimes that occurs at medical office locations. So we went ahead and added that as a condition. And that concludes the staff report. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Thank you, Ms. Woodman. Do we have any questions from council at this time? Us have done a great job, no questions. Would the applicant like to come forward at this time?
Fingers crossed. Good evening, Mayor Gilvin, members of council. My name is Jessica Hill and I am representing Veterinary Emergency Group. Thank you for your consideration of this master plan amendment and conditional use permit. Mr. Woodman did an excellent job explaining the property to you, but I'm gonna call Jennifer Hanlon from Veterinary Emergency Group up. She's the chief of staff and she's going to explain a little bit about the operation of Veterinary Emergency Group across the U.S. And hopefully that'll answer any questions you have about why this is an appropriate use for this particular location.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As Jessica said, my name is Jennifer Hanlon. I am the chief of staff at Veterinary Emergency Group. Just to give you guys some background on Veterinary Emergency Group, we like to call ourselves VEG, V-E-G. You might hear me mention that throughout the presentation. We are a group of emergency and urgent care hospitals for pets. We operate 24/7 throughout the country. We currently have 16 locations throughout New York, New Jersey, Massachusetts, Florida, and Colorado. We only do emergency medicine, so you might be familiar with the general GP veterinarian that you might take your cat or dog to when they need vaccines to get spayed or neutered. We do not do that. We do emergencies only. So we are a dedicated 24-hour emergency facility for the community. Just to give you guys an idea of how VEG differs from your typical emergency visit, when you come to VEG, everyone comes directly into the back. One of our big mottos is we don't separate people and their pets. So it's a very unique experience. If your cat or dog is getting their blood taken, or getting an X-ray, they're getting surgery done, you can be there every step of the way. It's a very important piece of our business that people get to see exactly what, kind of what the value is that VEG is providing to the community, just because emergency medicine tends to skew on the higher side of the spectrum. When you call VEG, you always speak directly to a veterinarian. That's very different than most facilities pretty much all over the country. Typically, when you call, you speak to a receptionist and they say, hey, I don't know, come in maybe. You get to speak directly to a veterinarian who can assess your needs on the phone and tell you, this is an emergency, come on in, or this is not an emergency, wait till the morning, then you can see your general veterinarian. We also collaborate with all of our customers' primary veterinarians. As I said, we are open during the day, but our biggest kind of peak hours are 6:00 PM to midnight, which means that our customers' primary vets are closed. So it's a very big piece of our business that we are getting those records back to those veterinarians so that our customers can continue to see their primary vet. Our hospitals range in size from 2,500 square feet to 5,000 plus. Our flagship hospital in White Plains, New York, is about 6,000 square feet. All of them are equipped with the newest veterinary technology to handle emergencies. We have our own radiology suites, surgery suites, and all of our diagnostics are in-house. Our build-outs are a very boutique feel. Typically, when you think of a veterinary hospital, you don't tend to think of a very high-end facility. That's not the case with VEG. Everything is very high-end finishes. We have Italian flooring, custom cabinetry. Our ceilings are exposed, so it's a, it's a higher-end feel. And there's a few pictures of what our treatment area looks like and our reception area, and just a few more photos as well. Pretty much all our hospitals tend to look almost exactly the same. I thought I would just do a few of our common FAQs that we get. The biggest one is what services do you provide? As you've heard me say, and Jessica as well, we only provide dedicated emergency services for issues such as vomiting, diarrhea, foreign body ingestion, any type of injury hit by car. We don't perform any routine cases such as vaccines, spays, neuters, or any type of other wellness or preventative care. There is no overnight boarding. If an animal is staying overnight at VEG, it's because it is being hospitalized and supervised by a veterinarian and a nurse. We do soundproof all of our hospitals. Each hospital is specifically studied by our design team, which is out of Boulder, Colorado. They actually only design veterinary hospitals, so they have a very good eye for that. And they're all soundproofed based on what the needs for that specific building are. And as it was mentioned, we mainly treat cats and dogs, but we do treat all kinds of household animals, small mammals like guinea pigs and rabbits and birds and reptiles. I also wanted to just bring up VEG's commitment to veterinary education. A big thing about the industry that a lot of people don't know is that it's very hard to staff in the veterinary industry, specifically for emergency doctors. At VEG, we actually offer four major student programs to help, you know, bring veterinarians into the industry. Our biggest one being the early entry track. Directly after graduating veterinary school, we provide students with a six-month structured mentorship program. We fly them around the country, they get to do different continuing education courses, they get to work in our facilities. And when they graduate at the end of that six months, they are a full-fledged ER doctor for VEG and then they get placed at one of our hospitals. We also do an externship program where we have students come, first year through fourth year. They can come and do a two-week experience at a VEG hospital. Basically spend time with, in the facility with the doctors, with the nurses, and just get that experience that they might not get through school. We also do the VEG scholarship. We are the only veterinary company in the country that does this. We offer a full fourth-year tuition to a veterinary student every year. We're very proud, this year we actually offered two of them, because we had two really great doctors. And we also have the campus ambassador program. So we have students throughout the country that kind of rep VEG on their campus to make sure that students are aware and they wanna, you know, apply for jobs with us when they graduate. I will say, we have been to the University of Georgia, which is not too, too far from here. We are expecting that we are gonna recruit some students from there. And we actually will set aside some spaces for Alpharetta residents to come do their... Some students have to do some clinical hours before they go to vet school. So we're setting some space aside for those students that would like to come and do that at our hospital. I'd also like to introduce our medical director, Dr. Amanda Stevens, is in the audience tonight. She is an emergency and intensive care veterinarian. Dr. Stevens will be our medical director at our site. Every hospital, every VEG hospital is run by a medical director and a hospital manager. So she will be overseeing that. She went to veterinary school at Louisiana State. She did her internship at Blue Pearl, which is down in Tampa, Florida. And she actually just relocated to Georgia at the beginning of the month. So she is your newest resident. And as you've heard us mention before, why did we choose Alpharetta for this location? As has been mentioned, there are no 24-hour emergency pet hospitals in Alpharetta. We really do consider ourselves a extension of the GPs in the area by providing the community with that dedicated 24-hour emergency care. You know, every minute counts in an emergency. If you have to drive 30 minutes to get somewhere with your critically ill pet, it, it's possible you don't make it. So we have really pinpointed that Alpharetta is the place for us to be. One, for lack of other facilities. And two, you know, the, the demographics in this area are really great. There's a lot of people that live here with a lot of pets. And I'm gonna hand it back over to Jessica, actually, at this point.
Thank you. And I forgot to ask for your address, just for the record.
Sure. So my business address is 7 Legion Drive in Valhalla, New York, 10595.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening again. Just gonna give you a little bit of information about why we think this property specifically is appropriate for VEG's use. Here's an aerial of the property, you can see it pinpointed in red. Immediately adjacent is the Alpharetta Eye Clinic. You'll hear from Dr. Tommy Ari, who's the property owner and the adjacent tenant, in a few minutes. Across the street is the Container Store parking lot and the Chick-fil-A. And obviously Avalon, a little bit farther north. You have Fifth Third Bank is immediately to the east. There is a courtyard by Marriott immediately south. And there's a Starbucks drive-through immediately to the west. So from an impact perspective, we think we're appropriately situated. Just looking at VEG's locations across the country, it's pretty typical that they have several co-tenants. Many of them are national tenants. If you look at the list, they've got a wide range, PM Pediatrics, Jersey Mike's, Chase Bank, Subway, CrossFit, FedEx, I can continue going on. MD Now, Cold Stone, Pure Bar, Boston Ballet School. So again, a wide variety of tenants that they share walls with. Looking at this particular property, again, it's a 9,500 square foot plus or minus building. Their VEG release approximately half of it. There are 61 onsite parking spaces. Code for this use, together with the Eye Clinic, would require 45. So we have more parking spaces than required. And obviously, they're replacing a restaurant use, which has a higher parking demand than this proposed use would have. The location of this site is very important to VEG because access and visibility is very important to them. That's how they get some of their patients. You know, you obviously aren't gonna go to Target and think, oh, I'm gonna go take my dog to the emergency vet, but you're gonna notice that it's there. And so in the middle of the night, when you're thinking, gee, where can I take my dog? Where can I take my cat? You'll know that there is something that is easily accessible that's open 24 hours. So it's top of mind, you see it. And that's why a location on a busy corridor like Old Milton Parkway is really important to VEG and why they have selected this particular location. I'm gonna let Dr. Tommy Ari come up and just give you a couple comments about his thoughts on the project.
Hello and good evening, I'm Dr. Tommy Ari.
I'm Dr. Tommy Ari, at the same address, at 2725 Old Milton Parkway, Alpharetta, 30009. Thank you for considering the application this evening. I came here to express my support of it. I know some initial conversations with staff and council. It's been brought up to my attention regarding, did Alpharetta Eye Clinic, were they aware of what they, you know, did they sign up to be next to an animal clinic when this zoning was considered or not, whether we could go through or not? We embrace it. We're fine with it. We were next door to a hibachi table before with our exam rooms next door to it, and we had no complication, no issue with the clanging of utensils going around. So the, I think, sick animals coming in, I know we think, you know, yapping dogs and things like that, but we have discussed soundproofing, but typically, sick animals aren't as vocal a lot of times. They're sick, just like when humans get sick, we don't yell as much. I also think, as a, just a person in the community, knowing that we've built Avalon and this whole city project of the downtown feel, we've got a live, work, and play environment, and I think this is a great facility to have in the city of Alpharetta, being that we don't have an emergency. We got, you know, vet places for routine care, but as far as emergency, I've had several friends that have, you know, taken that drive up or down 400, trying to figure out if their dog's going to make it, or pet, whatever. And so it's, I think it's crucial that we have set up this environment of, we've got everything within, you know, a close proximity, if you're going to live or work and play in this area that we've developed. So I think that would be a good addition to our community. Also, I like the fact that it's a health care of some sort, even though it's not humans. I think that we've got it all up and down that corridor of Old Milton, so healthcare is kind of a, you know, a welcome area for us to embrace, even though it's not human. So we would love to support them on their project, and I don't know if you have any questions for me as the owner, but we also own a building over on Windward Parkway, too. So we're happy to embrace them as owner and as co-tenant as well.
Any questions for the applicant at this time?
All right. Thank you.
Is that all of the applicant's presentation? Okay. Thank you. Ms. Cobb, do we have any public comment cards on the side?
We do not, sir.
But if there is anyone that would like to come forward and speak on this variance, allowing Veterinary Emergency Group, 2725 Old Milton Parkway, now's your chance to come forward. Seeing no one, we'll close public comment. Do I have a motion from council?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I'll offer a motion to approve MP-20-04/CU-20-07 Veterinary Emergency Group/2725 Old Milton Parkway.
Second. I have a motion by Councilwoman Richard, and a second by Councilwoman Binder to approve MP-20-04/CU-20-07 Veterinary Emergency Group, 2725 Old Milton Parkway. Is there any discussion? Councilwoman Binder?
Can I ask a question of staff?
You may.
Just on my conditions?
Mr. Woodman?
Mr. Woodman, one of the issues that we tend to get from the community is sound. So is there anything, do we feel assured if the soundproofing, which sounds great, it doesn't work, needs to be improved, that we can further make sure that that is done, as opposed to saying that they met the requirements of the condition?
I don't know that, there's nothing in the conditions currently that would allow for the city to enforce additional soundproofing beyond what they originally, what they initially get approved through their building permit for the interior tenant improvement. However, the adjacent business is also the owner of the building, so I would assume that he could enforce additional soundproofing if needed.
Okay. I'm just, yeah, because if the Starbucks or the hotel guests start complaining, then we get...
Yeah, I don't, I don't think that the concern would be exterior to the site. Again, a lot of the animals that will be brought into this site are going to be in an emergency-type situation. I don't foresee there being issues with the exterior.
Okay. I don't think so either, but I just, I know sometimes we approve things, and I'm like, man, I wish we had that one back.
Yeah. We do have things in our noise ordinance that talks about animals barking, dogs barking, things of that nature that we could certainly impose if necessary.
Councilwoman Richard? Any other comments from council? So we have a motion to approve by Councilwoman Richard and a second by Councilwoman Binder. If there's no other discussion?
Just to clarify, Councilwoman Richard, that's a motion with the recommended conditions?
Yes, thank you. Yes. With the conditions as read by staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. So all those in favor of the motion, along with the conditions, to approve MP-20-04/CU-20-07, please vote yes. Otherwise, vote accordingly. Councilwoman Binder? And it does pass unanimously. Third item up on our public hearing this evening will be item C, and that's PH-20-10 North Point Mall redevelopment, change to conditions of zoning. Director Cook, you have the floor.
The next item before you, the area that we're looking at is shown to you on the screen. The request, if approved, would allow for a change to a previous condition of zoning related to the Brookfield-North Point Mall master plan. The proposed change would allow for an extension to the reversion clause, which is associated with the dwelling-for-rent product. The property is located at 1,000 North Point Circle. The 83.6-acre property was approved on February 25, 2019, and I'll put that concept plan for you to see. The, again, approved in February 25, 2019 for a master plan amendment, rezoning, conditional use, and variance to allow a mixed-use development, including retail, restaurant, for-rent residential, and open space. And at the time of approval, the applicant had anticipated breaking ground by late 2019 or even early 2020. They had actually submitted for a land disturbance permit in October of 2019, so after the approval, they were moving through the process. They attended three different DRB meetings. The Design Review Board even had meetings just for this applicant to try to get through some of the approvals, so they were moving toward that approval. They had also developed the detailed stormwater park plan, so they had had several meetings with staff to look at the stormwater plans and how they were going to develop that park. But they've stated that due to the financial uncertainty resulting from COVID-19, they are requesting this change of the conditions because they're unable to guarantee that construction will commence by February 25, 2021. They're proposing a couple changes. Number one would be subject to Condition 30, which is a new condition. If construction of these rental units does not commence by December 31, 2028, then new residential units shall revert to for-sale units, provided, however, that if no portion of the proposed redevelopment has received a land disturbance permit by December 31, 2022, then for-rent residential shall revert to for-sale residential. In other words, even if the rental is held till 2028, they have to start on some part of the redevelopment. And then on Condition 30, that would be a new condition, and let me give you a little bit of background on that. MARTA, of course, is planning to put the BRT station in the middle of 400, which would be in close proximity to North Point Mall. Here is that old Sears location. As part of putting that bridge connection, they will need some land that is set aside for the drop-off area. So this is a blow-up of North Point. This is the Ring Road 400, so they would need some land from North Point in order to make those connections, the bridge connection, as well as the drop-off area. So Condition 30 ties to that, which states, "At such time as MARTA stipulates and funds its intention to move forward with a future Georgia 400 MARTA bus rapid transit and/or train station on Georgia 400 at North Point Mall, developer, its successors, and assigns shall dedicate land to the city as depicted on Exhibit A, an equivalent reasonably substituted track of like size within the Georgia 400 buffer agreed by the owner and the city. If at any time MARTA stipulates that the land is not needed, or if MARTA has not begun construction by December 31, 2028, then there shall be no obligation to dedicate the land or, if already conveyed to the city, it shall be conveyed back to the developer, its successors, or assigns. This reservation does not in any way entitle MARTA or the city to use any part of the balance of the mall property, and developer, its successors, and assigns are, is, are under no obligation to allow such use, nor does this reservation entitle MARTA customers to park on mall property to access the station." We reviewed the applicant's proposal. We find that we can support the request to extend the reversion clause because of some of the uncertainty with what's happened with COVID-19. We did add a third condition for your consideration, which is requesting some construction easements and right-of-way that will be needed for the future streetscape improvements along North Point Parkway. And I'll show you what that looks like really quick. Of course, we're going to be moving forward. We were awarded the $2 million to start the design for the improvements, the pedestrian improvements along the parkway. Along with that, there would need to be some crosswalk upgrades and some upgrades at the entrances that North Point is the owner of. I'll show you where those are located. They really, they don't have, they don't have frontage with, of course, with the buildings that they have, but they do have three access points. Show you what that, kind of a blow-up of what that looks like. So what we are requesting is Condition 31, which states, "Applicant shall dedicate right-of-way and/or easements, as shown on Exhibit B." This is Exhibit B, "As required for the construction and maintenance of the city's planned streetscape improvement along North Point Parkway. Anticipated impacts are related to enhanced sidewalks, landscaping, and traffic signal upgrades." Not sure if the applicant is, will accept this one, but we've added that for consideration. So our recommendation is to approve PH-2010 North Point Mall redevelopment, change to previous conditions of zoning, subject to the conditions which were submitted by the applicant, and it also includes a change to the original Condition Number Four that you'll see, we put in red, striking that. If construction does not commence by February 25, 2021, residential units shall revert to the for-sale-only 30, as previously read and submitted by the applicant, and then 31, which is, was added by staff for consideration, is the dedication of the right-of-way. And if you have any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer those.
Councilwoman Burnett?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Cook, how many, what's the total acreage? If you can get close on 30, that the applicant is including in the rendering?
In the Exhibit A for the MARTA? For this, and this one's, this one's not to scale, but it's about two acres, that's included? Yes.
Thanks, sir. Councilwoman Richard?
Kathy, can you review Condition Number One? This, from my recollection, this is a new condition, isn't it, compared to the original?
Oh, sure. Number one, subject to Condition 30 below. If construction of these rental units also has not commenced by December 31, 2028, then new residential units shall revert to for-sale units, provided, however, that if no portion of the proposed redevelopment has received a land disturbance permit by December 31, 2022, then for-rent residential shall revert to for-sale residential units.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Burnett?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Kathy, on the, in your conversations with MARTA, did Condition 30, did they give you any feedback? Thank you.
Yes, they, we had shared this condition with them, and they said that that would work, of course, for their purposes, and they were, you know, they were happy that Brookfield was agreeable to helping with the future MARTA expansion.
Any, Councilwoman Binder?
When did you submit Recommendation 31? Is that the new one with the easement and right-of-way?
Yeah, 31, maybe, that was probably in the last two weeks.
Okay.
Yeah. So that was, when we were looking at, of course, putting together, going out to bid for design and looking at, confirming with the Atlanta Regional Commission that we would be able to go forward with design, that's when we looked and realized, of course, although they don't have frontage, they do own some of the entrance frontage.
When are you, when are you going to start going out looking for easements throughout North Point, you think?
It'll be over a year before we start. We'll start the design process, actually, in, well, we'll put it out to bid probably by the end of the year. So it will be next, a year or even two years before we actually go through the construction right away.
Did we get any easements or anything for when we did improvements to Encore from North Point, when we initially approved this, or?
Yeah, we did, but they already had some improvements along the front. They had already a wider sidewalk that was, because when Encore Parkway was improved, they actually approved, wrapped the corner. So we were able to set aside the necessary right-of-way for that one, as well as the corner, Haynes Bridge and North Point.
Okay.
Yeah. But with this one, originally, when you looked, we looked at the, these are, there's three entrances that they have, they just own the actual drive entrance, not any land...
I'm sorry, say that again?
They only, they only own the drive entrance. They don't have significant land on each side of the drive.
Councilman Hikes?
If it turns out that construction of the rental units don't commence until early December of 2028, are those committed rental units per our apartment study?
They are. We'll, we'll hold these, yes.
Great years.
We'll, we'll keep showing those.
Great years.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council at this time?
Can I, and I also want to note, though, it's not, we show them as part of the inventory. We don't count that we gave them each year. Does that make sense? Because they were supposed to be commencement in 2021, we don't keep counting that we gave rental, that we approved rental each year. It just goes in the total.
Thank you for the clarification.
If it was.
Are there no other questions for Director Cook? Seeing none, thank you, ma'am. We appreciate it. If the applicant would like to come forward at this time.
Good evening, Mayor Gilvin, members of the council. I'm Kathy Smith-Kambrell and Russell, and it's a pleasure to be with you as always. Nick Nicolosi was planning on joining me tonight, but he has unfortunately become infected with COVID-19, so he cannot be with us, but he is quarantining and feeling much better, and he does send his regards. So you're stuck with just me, I'm afraid. We wanted to do something that would make sure that there could be access for this MARTA connection, and at the same time, extend our rights so that it would run concurrently, with the caveat that, obviously, you guys want to keep us honest, and that we should have to pull a permit for something in the reasonably foreseeable future in order to earn that right, all of which was absolutely acceptable to us. So we are perfectly fine with Paragraph One and Paragraph 30. I cannot, and my client cannot, consent to 31. We have a lender on this property, and it has taken me, what, 90... We have a lender on this property, and it has taken me, what, 90? When was this supposed to be on the calendar? First, was it like June? I don't know. It's been like 90 days, spending time trying to convince New York Life that, no, we are not going to have a MARTA station on the mall property, and no, it is not Rapid Rail, and yes, it should be to your benefit, because frankly, having people come from the bus rapid transit station into your mall will be a benefit in terms of the commercial value. It just took an inordinate amount of time and an inordinate amount of cajoling and begging, quite frankly, for us to get that approved. So they looked at me and said, "Are you out of your mind?" When I went back and said, "We'd also like some more property," and I just can't, I can't do it for you. I wish I could. And I think you know that every time you've asked me to try and do something, I do. And most often, I get it, but not on this instance. So we cannot agree to 31. It's certainly no secret that malls in general are in trouble and may not recover. And I don't know what's going to happen with the economy generally. I'm still involved in North DeKalb and trying to sell it. Northlake is now being converted to medical space. And this one, we're plugging along, hoping that we can get it to come back, notwithstanding the problems that we've had as retailers or owners of a retail mall. So we very much appreciate your help in this regard and are happy to turn around and hopefully help you all out with the MARTA commitment, and would ask that you support the staff recommendation minus Paragraph 31.
Thank you. Do you have any questions? I'm sorry, did you introduce yourself?
Oh, yeah, I did.
Okay, I missed it. I must have been just right.
Yes.
Councilwoman Binder?
When we first spoke with the applicants, we had that conference call. Has there been any more plans or talking to MARTA about transitory development and working, working with them at all?
No, but we figured if we were giving you guys the property, that we almost didn't need to be involved. If you still want us to be, I'm sure that's something, we've done it at other, other locations, Cumberland being prime among them. So we certainly have no aversion to participating. That may have been my misunderstanding, because I thought once we got you the property that...
I would think they would still want to talk to the adjacent property owner to get their transitory development, so.
Probably, but, you know, MARTA's not exactly speed dialing this forward either, which makes it difficult. And we have put in phone calls and haven't had them returned, so maybe with Kathy's help, we can get more involved in the future, and certainly are willing to do that.
I, I just understand the situation we're in, this economic environment we're in. I think everybody gets a pass for a year. I don't think I was very excited, and I know you're the messenger with this, but I wasn't very excited on their speed of what they were trying to do to bring, bring things forward besides an apartment. So I hope maybe between now and the next year or so, when they come for the next phase, that a little bit better plan than plant more apartments.
And I fully expect you to extort your pound of flesh should that occur. Yes, you will.
So I would hope Brookfield would maybe start showing their vision of what they want besides...
If Brookfield manages to hold on to this property, I'm sure that will be part of the plan.
So, but I think, I think most everybody gets a pass during this, during this time, because it definitely was unforeseen. Thank you for your work on it, too, to
Thanks.
Try to explain to your client what we were trying to do, so.
It wasn't the client, really wasn't.
Other questions from council?
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Cobb, do we have any public comment cards on this item?
We do not, sir.
But if there's here, anyone here that would like to come forward and speak on this item, now is your opportunity to come forward. Seeing no one, we'll close public comment. Do I have a motion from council?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I offer a motion to approve PH-2010 North Point Mall redevelopment slash change to previous conditions of zoning with Conditions 1, 4, and 30, as read and discussed by Ms. Cook, and with the removal of Condition 31.
Second. We have a motion by Councilwoman Richard and a second by Councilman Binder, and that was to approve staff's recommendation of approval of PH-2010 North Point Mall redevelopment, change to conditions of zoning with the applicable changes, Paragraphs 1, 4, and 30. All those in favor of the motion? Would you like to comment first? Is there anyone that wanted to comment? Councilman Binder?
Oh, I'm not him. Never will be. The, Kathy, thank you. When you guys came back, it's obviously very sensitive with COVID-19 and the freezing of the capital markets. I appreciate your work on Condition 30 with respect to MARTA as a part of our LCI study. There, it was where the city had designated that we wanted to see MARTA, and so thank you, if it were to exist, where we would want to see it. I also can't thank those folks enough. You know, it gives, it gives the city access to an actual asset, should the day ever come where there are federally appropriated funds coming. The city can use that to strategically create an economic development initiative around North Point Mall, but can also leverage what we have here to keep MARTA away from our protected residential, single-family corridors, and that's really what this was all about. And so I want to, you know, thank you for going. I know it's taken a little while, and Kathy and Brandon Beach and Jeff Parker, everybody at MARTA for, you know, really, you know, coming together to find something. And I might hope down the road is, even though this conversation is not over with respect to GDOT and MARTA and all of those things, I really hope they see us continuing to try because there are avenues that they would, that MARTA and GDOT would like to fund that they can't afford. And so if we can continue to leverage our brain trust to create win-wins that give them a little bit more of a palatable experience, I really think that this is where it can go, and I think it can keep it away from winward. So, thank you.
Any other comments? I'll just concur. I appreciate the efforts that Brookfield has put in, that you yourself have put into this effort. North Point Mall has been a big part of this community's success over the last 30 years, and we appreciate the time and effort that you're putting into this, and I can't imagine the challenges that y'all are facing with the capital markets and retail markets and everything else. So we look forward to working with you for a huge success in the near future and appreciate your efforts to get us over this hump and moving towards the future again. That being said, all those in favor of the motion to approve North Point Mall redevelopment, change to conditions of zoning with Paragraphs 1, 4, and 30 suggested by council, please vote yes, otherwise vote no, and it does pass unanimously.
Very much.
Thank you. Please tell Nick we're thinking about it and hope he gets better soon.
I will definitely do that. Thank you.
You're welcome. So the final item up on tonight's public hearing agenda is V-2013 Stack Data Center Parking and Stream Buffer Variances. Mr. Woodman, you have the floor once again.
The final public hearing item this evening is a request for parking and stream buffer variance to allow for the construction of a two-story, 131,720-square-foot data center on 6.5 acres for stack infrastructure. The location map on the overhead, the property is located at 3250 Webb Bridge Road, which is on the west, which is just west of the intersection of North Point Parkway and Webb Bridge Road. Property is ZONE CUP, Community Unit Plan. It's subject to the Preston Ridge Master Plan, POD G. Surrounding properties are ZONE CUP, except for, except that the property to the west is ZONE O&amp;I, Office Institutional. Village Park of Alpharetta and Stack Data Center, that's the same owner, are located to the west. Autumn Leaves Assist, Memory Care is located to the east. Preston Ridge Commons Office Park is located to the south, and Park V1 Office Building is located to the north. The comprehensive land use plan designation of the property is Corporate Office. Forgot to show with the location map some street view of the property. This is the, this is Webb Bridge Road. This is the Autumn Leaves Memory Care Facility. So the property is here, where you see the trees. This is additional frontage of this property on Webb Bridge Road. This is about the area where the, their curb cut that I'll show you on the site plan comes in off of Webb Bridge Road, one of the curb cuts. And this is a curb cut to the side off of Morris Road. And just put the location map up. So this is the subject property. I mentioned to the west was another stack data center. So this is the stack data center currently. This was approved as the T5 data center, so that, that's its previous name. And this is a look at that existing data center from Morris Road. As I mentioned, the applicant is requesting a stream buffer variance. This is, there are two streams on the property currently, so this is the smaller of the two unrelated streams. So there's a large stream, perennial stream, that occurs right here on the property, and the stream buffers are fairly extensive for that. This is not the stream buffer variance that is in question this evening. The stream buffer variance that's being requested is related to this small stream up here, and you can see that the building footprint, proposed building footprint sits over top of that stream. So the stream, if, buffer, if approved, would be piped. Again, it's located on the northeast side of the property, proposed underneath the placement of the building pad. The larger stream, as I mentioned, will be preserved and will not be impacted by the proposed development. According to the applicant, the stream in question is small, and it's been compromised by previous development activity. This property was used, previously used as a spoils area. And for those that don't know, and I had to look it up myself, it's, spoils area is a temporary storage for excavated materials. So we believe that it was used as part of the Morris Road construction to the west of this property. The applicant, as well as from the city, the applicant must also seek approval of the stream buffer encroachment from state EPD. The other variance with this request is a variance to reduce the required parking for a data center. The applicant believes that the city's parking requirements for their intended use would result in excessive impervious surface, increased stormwater runoff, and unnecessary tree removal. The applicant's data center, it's proposed to have 9,000 square feet of manned space and 123,000 square feet of unmanned space, which would require 153 parking spaces, as well as a land set aside for an additional 264 parking spaces. The applicant's site plan on the overhead, and the site plan currently depicts 47 spaces. The applicant also provided an alternate site plan that shows that additional 39 surface parking spaces could be constructed at the southeast corner of the property. And then there is a third site plan that shows if the data center, so there's always concern, the, the parking rates that aren't in our UDC are the way they are, because there's always concern that these data centers in the future, with the changes in technology, could convert into office space. So that's why the concern with the lack of, of parking. And so the applicant shows on this alternative site plan that their previous equipment yard would be removed, because again, it would no longer be a data center, most likely be an office building, and that additional parking could be constructed in this location, as well as a parking, four-level parking deck over that area where they previously showed for surface parking. So again, this would be a situation where the use of the building would convert from a data center to another use, and, and the applicant is showing that they can provide the required parking for that future use. Before I get to the elevations, I've got some research that we just wanted to show you. So we did look at other data centers within the city. The applicant's request is at the beginning of the table here. So we looked at the other sites that are operating in the city. There are 10 data centers currently operating in the city. Most of these sites did go through the city's public hearing process to reduce the required parking, including the adjacent data center, the stack data center, that's the former T5 data center. That property received variance approval in 2011 to reduce parking for 100,000-square-foot data center, and their, their initial requirement was 206 spaces, and they were approved to construct only 50 spaces. Go back to the building elevations. So this is the building elevation. The material, the applicant did provide a legend with materials, and there's a mix of metal panels, as well as precast concrete material on the exterior of the building. This would be the building facing Webb Bridge Road. This is the building and the utility yard, as seen from the driveway on Morris Road. And then the applicant also provided, so they also provided, wanted to show what the required buffers would do after a few years of growth. So this is, this shows there are buffer requirements, 40-foot buffer, to screen the building from the public right-of-way. So along Morris Road, this is the vegetation after one year, and this is what they're showing, that same vegetation after five years. This is the point of access off of Webb Bridge Road at one year and then five years. This item was shown to the public at the October 14 Community Zoning Information Meeting. There were no public comments at that meeting. The staff has reviewed the applicant's proposal and finds that the variances do not conflict with the established criteria. The property does have an unusual shape, and the stream in question is small and has been compromised by the site being previously used as a spoils area for development activity. The parking variance is consistent with previous parking variances, requested variances approved at data centers in the city. If approved, conditions are recommended requiring additional stream buffer encroachment mitigation measures, and I'll detail those in one of the conditions. Additional landscaping to approve, improve aesthetics and screening, as well as a land set aside and reservation for future parking. With that, staff is recommending approval, subject to the following conditions. One, property shall be developed substantially in accordance with a site plan titled STACK ATL-L2 Site Plan with Proposed Parking. So that is the, I just want to make sure, because it's understood what, if approved, what would be developed. Here we go. So again, this would be the site plan referenced in Condition Number One. So this is the site plan that shows parking at the entrance off of Webb Bridge Road, and there are some, there's also some parking along the side of the building. This would be the plan that would have 37 parking spaces. That site plan was prepared by Corrigan dated 8/31/2020, except for modifications required to comply with the conditions below. Two, building and equipment enclosure materials and design shall comply with the applicable data center regulations as approved by DRB. This item actually has gone before the DRB. It has received approval of the building by DRB. However, the conceptual approvals were limited to the landscape plan and the site plan. At the time that this item went to DRB, the applicant had not contemplated a variance, so they were going to try to meet the required parking, and there was not, they did not realize that this small piece of stream had been classified as a stream. So that had been worked out or realized after the fact. Condition Three, data center shall not exceed 131,720 square feet. Four, security fence shall be located behind the required 40-foot heavily-planted landscape block. buffer. And just to show you that on the applicant's renderings, so we just want to make sure that the landscape is closer to the road with the security fence behind. Five, 40-foot landscape buffer shall include required landscape strip plantings along street frontage. The full width of the buffer shall be heavily planted to screen the equipment compound and shall not include improvements such as parking. Six, site shall comply with parking lot tree island requirements. I think there was one location in their parking off of Webb Bridge Road where the number of parking spaces without a tree island was exceeded. So that's why we added condition number six. Condition seven, land for additional parking per site plan titled STACK ATLL2 site plan with code required parking dated 9/1/2020 shall be set aside at the southeast corner of the site and preserved as green space until such time as additional parking is determined to be needed by the city or the use changes. The utility courtyard shall be reserved for additional parking should the use of the property change in the future. And again, that site plan referenced is this site plan. So this is the site plan that shows where the utility yard could be converted into additional parking and where the four level parking deck could be placed in order to accommodate a change of use from data center to another use. Condition eight, property owner shall be required to construct up to 39 additional parking spaces in the future as depicted on the site plan titled Site Plan As Indicated, dated 6/1/2020, if the city determines and can document, document that a parking shortage exists. And that is the color site plan that shows the additional 39 surface parking spaces at the southeast corner of the property. Condition nine, stream buffer variance shall be limited to site plan titled STACK ATLL2 site plan with proposed parking prepared by Corgan dated 8/31/2020. Condition 10 deals with the additional mitigation. So the applicant proposed additional mitigation to increase the TSS removal rate from 80% to 85%. And the staff is recommending that mitigation, as well as additional mitigation measures, which are in 10A through D. And, and I'll read those. Developers shall provide additional measures to mitigate the stream buffer encroachment as approved by staff, such as A, 10A, provide an additional 20% runoff reduction or water quality volume for the project's new impervious area, which is in addition to the standard of requirements. 10B, provide an ecological assessment of existing vegetation for the entire onsite riparian buffers, including recommendations for vegetative management. The plan shall detail means and methods of exotic and invasive plant removal, as well as revegetation of the area with native riparian plants, trees, shrubs, and ground covers in order to fill, fill in existing gaps and gaps created by the removal of exotic and invasive plants. Provide a list of proposed plants and quantities. Vegetative management, management plans shall be implemented for four times the proposed under-stirred buffer encroachment. 10C, provide onsite stream or wetland restoration if site conditions warrant such a project. And condition 10D, other options that provide an ecological lift as approved by staff. And then finally, condition number 11, prior to issuance of a land disturbance permit, the property owner shall provide the city with a copy of the approved 25-foot vegetated stream buffer encroachment application from the state of Georgia EPD. And that concludes the presentation. If you have questions, I'm happy to answer those.
Thank you, Mr. Woodman. Mayor Pro Tim Mitchell will go first.
Thank you, Mr. Woodman. Can you or Kathy either one address the 2014 recommendations from council that regarding data centers and what that required? Because I don't see that in this rendering.
Sure. So we did, council did approve miscellaneous regulations that apply to data centers in 2014. And these are all the regulations. And you will notice that, I thought I had marked this. Condition A, I'm sorry, 1B. So this condition right here states 75% of each elevation facing a public roadway shall be brick, stone, or accent material. Each elevation which faces a public roadway shall be consistent in terms of design, materials, details, and treatment. And I do agree, Mayor Pro Tim, that based on the elevations that were provided, the, this is not, brick or stone is not used, being used on the building currently. And this does not represent an accent material because it's being used on all four sides of the building.
So how was that missed?
The likely, it may have been that the comment may not have been provided to DRB staff possibly, or the applicant may have interpreted, or DRB may have interpreted that the ax, or accent material sufficed as the materials that were shown on the building. But certainly, this can be sent back to DRB if that's the or, or council could potentially put conditions on it clarifying the brick or stone added to the building.
Well, the DRB, have they addressed the facade of the building, especially that facing Webb Bridge or Morris?
Yeah, so DRB has approved the building. So the building has been approved by DRB. So the exterior materials, how it's, how it, you know, what it looks like from Webb Bridge and Morris Road. So if there are any changes, those would either need to be sent back to DRB or if, if council wished, it could be subject to staff approval as well.
Well, by our own guidelines, set in 2014, they weren't followed because it's all concrete and metal, correct?
Yeah, I, I agree with you that the regulation was not enforced on, on that building.
Thank you, Mr. Woodman.
Councilwoman Richard?
Thank you, Mayor. Michael, you indicated it's been, the elevations have been approved. Are there any other components that still need to go back to DRB?
Yeah, so the, the DRB did provide conceptual approval. So that's not a final approval, but they considered the site plan as well as the landscape plan. But they did not give a final approval. They were just basically were giving, providing feedback to the applicant at that time, based on their site plan and landscape plan for a future approval. So they would need approval of both those.
So they would have to come back through DRB?
Correct.
Separate of this elevation discussion?
They would need to unless there was a desire to send that elsewhere.
Okay, thank you.
I believe it was Councilman Hypes next, and then Councilman Burnett.
Mr. Woodman, on recommendation number seven, are you open to a little change in the language, cleaning up the language where it talks about until such time as additional parking is determined by the city to be needed, as opposed to being needed by the city?
As, I would agree that we probably, really in condition number seven, the, is determined to be needed by the city is probably not necessary. That's really applies to condition number eight. Condition seven really is based on the use changing of the property. Is, does that answer your question?
If, if we're going to have that phrasing in there, I would, if it's going to run with the land, I would like it to read additional parking is determined by the city to be needed.
Sure.
As opposed to the city needing the parking. So.
Okay.
Just to, if you're.
Sure, sure.
Councilmember Burnett?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With respect to the 2014 comments, does the staff have an understanding that a data center is meant to live in relative anonymity instead of highlight its features and accent walls?
I do understand that. However, these buildings, I think what we have to remember is there were concerns at the time that the city started considering data centers, that they would convert to maybe an office building in the future to have exterior, in, in those cases, the required buffers can then be removed from the properties. And then these buildings do become visible from the roadway. So I think that's, I think that's the difference.
Where is the, how far back from the, not necessarily the, the fence line, the actual building, and if he doesn't know, y'all can answer this in a minute, how far back from the road do these buildings sit?
So the actual buildings are required per the, the data center regulations to have a 100-foot setback. That does not apply to any utility yards.
Correct, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions from council at this time? Michael, just to follow up on that, because I was here in 2014, now I'm trying to remember. The data center that's next door, were these guidelines in place when that was constructed? I don't remember when that was built.
For you on that, and I'm just, I've got my materials in a bunch of different places and I can get that for you in one second. So those regulations were not in place at the time that the adjacent STACK data center was approved. That was approved in 2011.
Okay, I knew it was, um, 2011, I wasn't here. I just remember it then. Okay, that's sad. If you don't mind, just showing the buildings again.
The, the proposed building?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Yep.
And so there's no windows on that, right?
The, so this is the elevation that faces Webb Bridge Road, and you do see that there is glass, but the other elevations are pretty much devoid of any glass.
And so I'm just trying to think this through. If, say, 20, 30 years in the future, we needed to address a zoning or a repurposing of this building, I would assume they'd have to add some windows somewhere on those other three walls, correct?
I would think that it would be, make the building look a lot more aesthetically pleasing from the road. I think that would probably be what the community would expect.
So we'd have another bite at this apple if they had to come in either for a rezoning or for building permits?
The, the, for this particular property, if it were to, let's say, convert to an office building, office buildings allowed within the zoning and the master plan currently, so they would not need to come back to council for that. If they built, so if they took down this utility yard and built the required parking there, as well as the four level parking deck, they would meet the parking, so they would not need to come back to council for a variance. So there is potential that a change of use would not necessarily require them to come back to council. If they were making exterior changes on a building that were on our corridors of influence, which are certain major roadways through the city, not Morris Road, but Webb Bridge Road, those exterior changes do require DRB approval.
So if they were to make external changes to accommodate?
There's potential, yeah. But if, let's say, for example, so this is, if they didn't propose any exterior changes on the elevation that faces Webb Bridge Road, but they did propose them on the section that faces Morris Road, this would not require DRB approval to add any, to get approval of any exterior changes because it's not on our corridor of influence. However, we could add something to the condition that would require them to any exterior changes on the elevation facing Morris Road, that DRB approval would be required.
Okay, thank you. That, that helps me understand the challenges we'd face sometime in the future perhaps. There are no other questions from council at this time? Thank you, Mr. Woodman. The applicant would like to come forward at this time? Welcome back, Councilmen Owens.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Good to see you. No, it's not. Had, put it in the right port, it helps, I'm sure. Mayor and Council, good evening again. My name is Chris Owens. For the record, my address is 7425 Mid Broadwell Trace in Alpharetta, Georgia. I come before you tonight representing STACK Infrastructure. And I have with me as well, I have Mike Casey from STACK Infrastructure. He's their chief data center officer. And I also have Pat Corkle, the project landscape architect. Pat and I were fortunate enough to work together with Mr. Casey on T5 when the original data center was built. And T5 has since sold that asset to STACK Infrastructure. Mr. Casey has joined them, and I'll let him tell you a little bit about who they are and what they do. But Mr. Casey lives in Dunwoody, Georgia, and he's also a graduate of Old Milton High School. So he is local and believes in what we're doing here and is invested in that to show it, so.
It's Chris. STACK Infrastructure, we provide data centers for today's most discerning customers. We build, own, operate data centers. Most of our clients, including the ones in the existing building, are Fortune 500 customers, cloud providers, financial institutions, transportation logistics companies. Really, everything that we're doing right now is all being provided by, by the cloud or by data center, by infrastructure. The growth, we're talking about changing of use from office to data center. Data centers is one of the fastest growing uses of data center compared to office, retail, several others. We have seen continued growth throughout the whole portfolio. We're a national company. We're in seven different markets, nine different data centers. We're committed to the Alpharetta market, which is why we bought this land that's adjacent to our existing facility. There, obviously, there's operational synergies there. It's a good fit for us. It's not the perfect piece of land by any means to actually build a data center, but for us, it works because of the operational synergies. We love to have the ability to continue to grow our presence in Alpharetta and have existing clients that are in the existing building, be able to, to continue to build their, as they build out their data centers, and we're almost, we're almost fully leased in the existing building, to grow into the next phase of our, our growth in Alpharetta.
Do we have any questions from council for the applicant? Councilmember Burnett?
Thanks, thanks, guys. Can you talk to me real quick, Chris, about the stormwater plan? Knowing that there is that stream that was highlighted, are you guys going to detain that underneath? Are you gonna, or, or are you gonna pipe it offsite? What do y'all plan to do?
I, I can show you that, and if, Mr. Drinker could, yeah, thank you. This is the preferred site plan that Mr. Woodman presented to you just a few moments ago. As you see, the footprint of the building sitting square in the center of the site, there's an existing stream that enters the property from underneath Webb Bridge Road, flows north, and goes into an existing pipe network about this location here today. That pipe network will be maintained around the building and be connected to where it drains to today. So it won't be touched, except to move the pipe over. The small stream in question tonight is the one that Mr. Woodman pointed out here. And as he described, was accurate. We hired an ecologist to look at these streams, and our ecologist, with respect, did not feel like this smaller area was a stream by definition. However, the law in Georgia requires the local municipality, the local jurisdiction, to confirm that. The city's stormwater engineer disagreed. We were in the midst of that discussion when we came before DRB. Okay? So the ultimate call by law is the local jurisdiction. The city's stormwater engineer decided it was a stream. Therefore, we have filed with the state for buffer encroachment, as well as here with you all tonight for that buffer encroachment. So if that is, if that is approved tonight, that will also be put into that same pipe that's going around the, the building and be held and contained separate from the runoff from the, from the development of this property. So this property's development runoff will be directed into a system that was planned for by the Preston Ridge Master Plan. We proposed additional measures to the state. That was not good enough for the city's stormwater engineers, you can tell from the application. So the state has a bar. We raised it when we went to the state. The city asked us to raise it again. The city's provided three different options or three different opportunities, and we are agreement in principle with the city's stormwater engineer on a combination of two of those items. We're going to enhance and clean up the existing buffer that faces Webb Bridge Road. Webb Bridge Road. If you've been out there, you can tell it basically was used as a stockpile area, material storage area for every development that was built in Preston Ridge over the years. This is the last piece of property in the Preston Ridge development that has not been built on. So during that time, there were things done that shouldn't have been done. My client inherited that. So what we've got now is we've got invasive species. We have kudzu that came in with a load of dirt at some point over the years, and we've got other things growing in that buffer that is not good for the long-term health of that buffer. So we are going to clean that up. We're going to correct that and help the stormwater runoff in that effect. So I hope that answered your question. There's a lot of stormwater issues going on out there.
Any other questions from counsel? Councilwoman Richard?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chris, can you, is there going to be interparcel connectivity to the prior T-5 site from?
Councilwoman, Councilwoman Richard, yes, there will be. And if I may, as you can see, the existing data center site is just to the left or the west of this property. The new parking lot of New Access Drive coming in will come around, and there will be interconnectivity right here. If that's something that I can highlight, cooperate, be right there. There will be vehicle connectivity and pedestrian connectivity for any cross-connection of employees and clients or tenants that operate in the building.
Great.
The other item I'd like to point out, since you asked, we've told staff that we worked as hard as we could to try and avoid this stream. This area highlighted in green is an area of a land swap that STACK is proposing with itself to make this property slightly larger, so that we can still get this building in there even with the stream buffer variance. So we tried to move the building over onto the property next door to avoid everything and still couldn't move it far enough. So they are taking some measures to try and help themselves, so to speak, before we got to this.
Okay. And my last question, are there, are you in support of the conditions that were reviewed by Mr. Woodman?
We are comfortable with the conditions. I may have a disagreement with Mayor Pro Tim Mitchell about the definition of accent material, but we went to DRB for that elevation review, and they saw fit to approve that. But no, we are in agreement with the proposed conditions by staff.
Great. Thank you.
Any other questions from counsel?
For the owner of the STACK, do you have any objections to, can you pull the elevation up, the front facade that faces Webb Bridge Road?
I have that.
Do you have that? Okay. Just where the metal is adding stone, because apparently from your other elevation, it is seen from Webb Bridge. No other stone, no other brick anywhere else on the building. Just where the metal is, take that metal off and put the brick and stone so that it more closely matches autumn, autumn leaves, the development that we required so much brick and stone next door on the other side of you, and needs to blend. But what I'd like to see is that it go back to DRB as they review it and let it have a final approval of staff.
I'm not, I'm not exactly sure what you're talking about, but we have the metal panels on the curtain wall, kind of in the middle. Is that what you're?
Yeah, on both sides of the glass, just on that west of Webb Bridge, front facade.
We are putting in brick accents in select areas, especially things that are visible. I don't want to make a comment, because I'm not exactly sure of the areas architecturally that you're talking about.
Right.
Remediable to that. The elevation that you just showed with the curtain wall, that's a, that's a pretty big architectural feature, especially for a data center.
James, could you get that picture up, because I don't want us to leave here with any confusion over.
See, autumn, autumn spring is totally brick and stone next to you. It was up there just a minute ago, that one.
Now, Councilman Mitchell, the autumn leaves, which I'll show the council here in a moment, is 100% brick and stone, and it is overpowering. That's a story and a half structure at best with some pretty high-hip roofs, and it was done with veneer. It's not a full stone or brick, and I'll zoom in on it. It's fairly monotone, the reason I bring it up. So I just want to hesitate. I don't want to commit to, quote, "copying" that, because I do think that's a little bit too much of a good thing, if I could offer that. But this is the elevation that we discussed.
It's just the brown area where the, where the metal is, on the left wall and the right wall where the logo is. The remainder of the building, I would not even consider. So you are amenable.
It's remenable to adding brick accents at select locations where you can see it from the, from the street.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Now, I'm confused, because I just want to make sure that we're all talking about the same areas, because I'm assuming that somebody's going to want to add a condition about this, and I want to make, or ensure we all understand what. So is there any way, James, to draw on this?
I could, I could do that, make an attempt at that, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, okay. Thank you, James. Sorry.
It's quite all right.
Because if you don't, I believe he's talking about the gray area that begins on the right and on the left, and there's a, pardon?
Mr. Mayor, I believe he's talking about.
Correct.
So that's a metal panel right now. That's.
Just those two areas.
Now, I'm highlighting what Mr. Mitchell was referring to, rather than suggesting that we're in 100% agreement with this at this point, for discussion purposes.
Thank you. I appreciate it. I just want to make sure we're all understanding exactly what's being asked and what's being stated.
I believe, Mr. Mitchell, you're talking about those two.
Yeah, just simply those two areas that's seen from Webb Bridge.
And I've got a, I've got a perspective view from Webb Bridge to share with you.
Well, I've seen your perspective views, and you do see those walls from Webb Bridge.
Right.
You see it right there?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, that's, that's the view year one from Webb Bridge. You see the right-hand side of the, so you can see a portion of the curtain wall here, and this is, this is year-one landscape screening. You can see a portion of the curtain wall, and this, this left-hand piece is actually behind that corner. The right-hand side, you can see there is, is not visible. But let's see if I can.
And still, the deciduous trees fall, the leaves fall.
We could cut some more trees down, Mr. Mitchell, if you prefer that. Let's see.
And while he's doing that.
There's the one-year landscape screening, and then this is the five-year landscape screening. So it is going to grow in, but certainly, I think the preference would be, rather than that 100% coverage of those areas, to allow an architect to weigh in on the right proportion. What I'm hearing, Mr. Casey say, is he's not objecting to it, but would rather make sure that it's right if it's going to be.
And I'm good with that, with final approval from staff.
Yeah, that's right. I can't, we need an architect to know.
Right. Thank you.
Any other questions? Councilwoman Bynner?
For the landscaping, so what would that look like? I think, thank you for bringing the five-year forecast on that. What's that going to look like during the fall and winter?
I'm looking at, I'm looking at Pat. Is that?
I was hoping, I was hoping Pat would come up.
Evergreen. So.
Thank you, Jason.
Got to get him in and make him earn his, earn his keep.
In the back, and I'm going to need an assistant on this, but in the back end of that parking row, before you get to the building, there are large evergreens there. Again, to continue that 40, we have a 40-foot strip that's buffered, to continue that, to even hide more of that portion of the building. Do you have the landscape on there right there? If you go right to that corner, right there, is that on screen?
Mm-hmm.
So we have evergreens in that corner as well, but for the most part, everything is in that 40-foot landscape strip. And it's, I don't know if you've been next door at T-5, you can't see through that forest. I mean, everything we've done is just out on the street now, so.
Is that from going from Morris, because now we have a residential community there? They won't be able to see with the screening, the landscape screening?
Again, you've got 40 feet of heavily landscaped green, and it is evergreen, and it's deciduous out by the street to accent. You can get a little, get a little glimpse.
You know how this works, Pat?
Where's my little trample mic? No, I don't.
Here's, here's year one from Morris Road, and here's year five.
You get a one, you get a static view right there, if you're standing there looking right there. But you move 10 feet that way or 10 feet that way, you're back into heavily screening. You know, you can't screen the road itself, you can't plant the road itself. But that's 40 feet of heavily, heavily landscaped plant, mostly evergreen.
That's a narrow window.
Just because that's residential.
Across the street?
Yeah. I'd like to see what can be done, just on accents, to disprove that up, so it doesn't look like a warehouse building. Seeing how, seeing how DRB, y'all presented to DRB prior to that 2014 ruling, or?
We presented to DRB about two months ago.
Two months ago?
Yeah, the first phase of T-5 was built prior to 2014.
So I'm going to ask my question first. But so 2014, there was that ruling, but DRB didn't know about that with having accent, stone, and was that part of the presentation?
Yes, sir.
Then I thought we, we just said, it just came up two weeks ago, that it wasn't part, or maybe I missed that with Mr. Woodman.
I'm not speaking for Mr. Woodman. I can tell you that the elevations and materials were discussed. We didn't present stone and brick, so I'm not suggesting that we, you know, dodged around it, but the code says what it says.
Was the 2014 criteria brought up to DRB? No?
No.
Okay. That's a, that's a major concern of mine. I'd like DRB to have another crack at it if, because they weren't given the whole story. So I don't know, that is a concern.
It was not presented.
Okay.
Any other questions from counsel at this time? Thank you, gentlemen.
You. I'm going to leave this connected in case something comes up during discussion.
Thank you. That might occur. Ms. Cobb, do we have any public comment cards on this item?
We do not, sir.
But if there's anyone here that would like to come forward and speak on this variance application, please do so now. Seeing no one, we'll close public comment.
Can I ask Mr. Woodman?
Yes, you may. Councilman Hype, she has the floor. Mr. Woodman, I believe they would like your attention.
I'm going to need your mask up.
So it's been brought to our attention about 2.7, 2.1 data centers. And I'm in the municipal code right now, and I see the reference to brick, stone, or accent material.
Mm-hmm.
And I've done a word search for accent material, and the only place it appears in the code is right here. There is no definition. It doesn't appear anywhere else. What is staff's understanding of accent material?
So I believe the intent of this particular regulation with regard to brick, stone, or accent material was that the building be primarily brick or stone, but that, like most buildings that we see, they're not completely just brick and stone. There are also some accent materials, like they may be, they may use metal on an accent roof or something like that, or there could be, ephes or stucco could be used as an accent material, meaning that it is not the primary material used on the building. I do agree with you, and I think that the reason why this was approved the way that it was at DRB is because there's some confusion within this regulation that we probably need to clean up. But I believe the intent was that the building primarily be brick or stone.
Well, okay. I can't speak to the intent of when it was passed, and I don't see any guidance from the wording here. And so I'm looking for consistency and application from the staff's point of view as guidance for me. So your understanding is the intent would be primarily brick or stone?
Correct. That, that would be our interpretation of this particular regulation. We think that accent material was just put in this regulation, because there could be some accent materials used within that elevation facing the roadway. I agree with you. It's confusing, the way that it's written, but I can, I have a better understanding of what the intent was when the regulation was written.
Well, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions from counsel at this time? Okay. That being said, and I believe Councilwoman Richard no longer is choking. She seems to be okay. So I'll call for a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will offer a motion to approve V-20-13 STACK data, data center variances. I'll just go through the, the conditions, the only change to the first set of conditions. Condition number seven, I will make a recommendation to change the third line to read until such time as additional parking is determined to be, determined by the city to be needed, or the use changes, period. The rest of the condition stays the same. And then conditions eight through 11, there are no changes there. I will make a motion to add condition number 12, brick accents shall be added in select locations on the Webb Bridge Road elevation with final approval by DRB. And that's the end of my motion.
I'll, I'll second it. I'd also like to offer a friendly amendment to that new addition to say brick or stone.
I'll accept that.
And could you give me the verbiage on that change?
Brick or stone accents shall be added in select locations on the Webb Bridge Road elevation with final approval by DRB.
Are all council members clear on what the motion is? Okay. Is there any discussion? Councilwoman Bynner?
I just want to say that this is a great application, great project. We're going to have a lot, a lot more traffic going on in that area with trade winds, and having a data center there is a good, a good addition to help not increase, increase the traffic there. I just, I think, given the information that we have now, kicking it back to DRB like it, like our normal process is, we see it and then DRB goes, I don't think it's out of, out of turn. So take the comments that we have here, and plus, I didn't want to design it by up here tonight, because it just, that increases the risk for bad, bad architecture. So I think it just gives us time to look at it and go through the normal procedures that we have, so.
Councilwoman Burnett?
Just wanted to thank you guys. You know, a lot of people don't realize that your company creates jobs that creates jobs, and you offer communities. There are 98% of this country would kill to have one data center. This community has 10. And access to power, access to fiber, the economic development initiatives, I'm grateful for what you guys do from, from a mission. To be able to just roll out a second phase at 131,000-plus square feet is insane, and you wouldn't do it if the market wasn't there. So I am excited to see the third phase. See ya.
Any other comments from counsel?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mayor Pro Tim Mitchell?
Thank you. I'm also thrilled to have you all here. I think it's important. I know it's a difficult lot of land. It's, the configuration of it is problematic in the beginning, and, but I'm glad with the stream or non-stream that you all have worked that out to work it around the, the building, Chris, and all that. So I'm very thrilled to have, I just want whatever we build here to be left with, with as much architectural integrity as we can, as it's being built, because we're stuck with it for a long time, our community is. And given the fact that the neighborhood right next door is a lot of brick and stone, this deserves at least some. So we'll let the DRB take a look at that, and thank you for your interest in our area.
Any other comments from counsel?
Well, I'll just say that I can't support the motion just because of the architectural changes. I do value the investment you're making here, and I've looked at that. It went through the DRB. I don't see that it is being a terribly unattractive building to begin with, especially for what it is. I understand that at some point I understand that at some point in the future, we would have another bite at the apple, and I'd be understanding of an amendment that if it were ever to change uses, that we would once again send it back to DRB. But I just, to go back and add some brick and stone to a data center, going back to Councilwoman Burnett's opinion, it's a competitive market, and Alpharetta's not a cheap place to build data centers as it is. And so the more we add costs on it, the more we're gonna run other investors away that might be otherwise inclined to build a data center that basically creates no traffic and provides tremendous value for very little impact. So I understand why council members feel that way. I just wanted to let you know why I feel differently, and I can't support that, so. But I do wish you the best of luck regardless of what happens. That being said, and there's no other comments, all those in favor of the motion to approve V-20-13 stack data center parking and stream buffer variances with changes to number seven condition, verbiage the city determines as explained by Councilwoman Richard, and with brick or stone accents on Webb Bridge facing wall as approved by DRB. If you approve of those conditions, please vote yes, otherwise vote no. And it does pass 6-1.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
So that'll wrap up the public hearing portion of tonight's meeting, and we'll move on to the new business. And the new business is item A, consideration of an ordinance to amend Chapter 30 of the City Code loitering. This will be the first reading. Director Robinson, you have the floor.
Good evening. We are recommending that you, Mayor and Council, approve an ordinance to amend Chapter 30 of the City Code to add an Article IV for loitering for the purpose of engaging in the solicitation of sex acts. Basically, the recommendation is it mirrors the state law, and we're asking for an ordinance to be able to create that and have a local jurisdiction over these type cases, which would help us regarding investigations and pursuing criminal activity that fall under this umbrella of sexual loitering. So we're, again, asking that we basically just mirror the state law and create a local ordinance for that, which will benefit us in our investigations and working to hopefully combat any type of illegal activity related to this type of conduct.
Do we have any questions from council? Mr. Taylor, are you going to read the ordinance for us?
Yes, this is an ordinance to Mayor and Council of the City of Alpharetta, Georgia. To amend Chapter 30 offenses and miscellaneous provisions of the code of the City of Alpharetta, Georgia, to add an Article IV loitering for the purpose of engaging in solicitation of sex acts to provide for an effective date and for other purposes.
Thank you, sir. Any questions from council at this time? Ms. Cobb, do we have any public comment cards on this item?
We do not, sir.
But if anyone would like to come forward and speak on this ordinance, now's your chance to come forward. Seeing no one, we'll close public comment. Do I have a motion from council?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to amend Chapter 30 of the City Code loitering as read by Mr. Jones.
I will second that motion.
Did I introduce him incorrectly?
Indeed.
That's all right. Y'all can correct me. It wouldn't be the first time. Thank you, Mr. Jones. So we have a motion and a second? All those in favor of the motion to approve the ordinance, please vote yes, otherwise vote no. And it does pass unanimously. So that'll wrap up the new business portion of tonight's meeting, and we'll move on to the workshop, which is Parks Rules Ordinance Update. Director Rogers, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Council. So this is our third city council workshop on this particular item, so I think we are getting close. Remember, at the last council meeting, there were some minor changes to what we had proposed. I'd like to go over those real quick, just the changes from the, since the last workshop. Under the park rules, there is an item that talks about bikes are not permitted on park trails. We did add an exception, except, exception, children under the age of six on bikes with training wheels are allowed on park trails when accompanied by an adult, which would allow parents to have their children with them when they're walking in the trails if they have training wheels. The second one change is to, with the skateboards allowed, where skateboards are allowed, we added that designated areas will be posted with proper signage, so there'd be no, it'd be clear as to where skateboarding would be allowed. We cleaned up the littering and the vandalism and made it clear that where's no littering, vandalism, damage, or removal of city property allowed. We consolidated on the second page golf and archery together, so we didn't have two no's, we only had one no there. We took, we, part of the cleaning up, we put cutting of trees and shrub under that part, and then the removal and attachment of any kind of tree, plants, and structures also cleaned that up. So I think that addressed all of the, the changes that were suggested by council at the last one. As far as the park hours and by park category, we added Brook Maddox Park under the downtown parks as well for the companion document. We did, the Recreation Commission reviewed these changes at their October the 13th meeting and had no issues with the changes. If this is, if we get direction tonight, we would then get with the city attorney, craft the ordinance, and would have to be read twice in front of this group. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have now.
Councilman Hypes?
Director Rogers, I don't recall if in a prior discussion this had been brought up, but this refers to no bikes on park trails except the capital G Greenway. Is that distinguished from the Alpha Loop?
Yes.
So are bicycles allowed on the Alpha Loop?
Bicycles are allowed on the Alpha Loop, but we didn't include any Alpha Loop in these particular rules, because Alpha Loops will have their own set of rules.
Okay, and will, just as a matter of administration, will that be delineated in the code? Right now, the code refers to Greenway with a small g, Greenway Trails and Greenways. But when I see the, the Greenway, I think of the Big Creek Greenway.
Right, and that is.
So if it's delineated in that fashion, fine, otherwise, just trying to make sure the code.
Okay. That sounds like more of a question I should make sure that Mr. Thomas answers that question as we move forward.
Or Mr. Jones or Mr. Taylor?
I'm sorry. But the, before he says anything, the idea is that we are gonna have an ordinance for the Alpha Loop with rules for the Alpha Loop forthcoming.
Well, this might bring up even a broader issue. The Greenway is under, that's in Alpharetta, is under the park auspices of the park?
Yes.
But the Alpha Loop is not?
The Alpha Loop will be.
It will be?
Yes.
Okay. Because people are riding bikes on the Alpha Loop.
Yeah, and the intention is for bikes to be allowed on the Alpha Loop, because it is a transportation, it's thought more of a transportation corridor than it is a recreation corridor. That's why we didn't want to include it in the park rules, because there's gonna be things that are not allowed in parks that will be allowed on the Alpha Loop.
And the Greenway?
Well, bike, well, like, yes, but there's a distinction between the Greenways and the Alpha Loop.
Yeah, okay.
It is, I think it is the intentions to allow, and maybe I shouldn't even say that, but I know that there's gonna be an extent, there's gonna be the distinction between the Alpha Loop and the Greenway. There'll be things you'll be able to do on the Alpha Loop that you can't do on the Greenway.
I guess my intention during this workshop would be to get our verbiage down the first time, so that we don't come back later and have to rework the verbiage. And so if that's being done, great.
So just to follow up on that conversation, if I understand, the difference is we have parks, we have the Greenway, which we consider to be a linear park.
Correct.
And we have the Alpha Loop, which we intend to be a transportation corridor.
It will be, I think it, that's why we're working through that right now, to find out exactly how we're gonna use the terminology for the Alpha Loop. But it is my understanding that it is, it is a transportation corridor as well as a linear park. So there's, you know, whether electric bikes and scooters will be allowed on the Alpha Loop is still gonna have to be discussed. So there's still some discussion that we have to have about Alpha Loop before we're ready for the.
Well, the state took away any of our discretion as far as whether electric bikes can be on the Alpha Loop.
Say that, I'm sorry.
The state will not allow us to prevent electric bikes on the Alpha Loop. Anywhere there's a bike allowed, the state says we have to allow electric bikes. That's state law that passed last year.
Well, then, with that said, then we would have to allow them on the Greenway.
Exactly.
Yeah.
We do.
So it's not my, and my understanding is that the city, city, local jurisdictions have the right to limit electric bikes further than the state did. Now, if I'm wrong there.
You might want to do a little bit of research, because a local entrepreneur
Right.
notified me within minutes of the state legislature passing that bill last year. So it, I'm pretty sure, and we can confirm this, that the state legislature said if a bicycle is allowed, then the city can't prevent electric bikes, that as long as they stay under 20 miles an hour or something. So I, we can say we won't allow them on the Greenway, but enforcement's gonna be difficult.
Then it would be, it would be, what I would like to do is confirm that before we move forward with this, because I think this, that changes, that changes the, that changes everything here, and I, you know, I don't want to do a fourth workshop, but if that's what it takes, then certainly we want to get it right. You know, I don't want to have to come back in a year and say, oh, by the way, so we can.
Director Robinson, do you happen to recall that?
No, sir, I did not.
Okay. I was just checking.
Yep.
I hate to have to make you do this all over again.
Oh, no, no, no. You know, it's one of these, I have to come to these meetings anyway, so I might, you know, we have to do another workshop, it's not bothering me.
Okay.
Do you get that?
Yeah, absolutely.
Like I said, I can probably find the text from Pedago.
I would a lot rather, I'd a lot rather get it right a fourth time than, and have to come back and say we should have done it a fourth time, so.
I'm pretty sure, but yes, it would be good to confirm.
And let you know, and that'll give us a chance to, to talk about whether the Greenway ought to be a capital G or a little g, so that we get it right as we're moving forward in what the, what the terminology says.
Sounds good. Councilwoman Richard?
Morgan, when we passed the skateboard ordinance several months back, the, I'm sorry? Okay. At the, if I, correct me if I'm wrong, my understanding at the time was that in general in our parks, skateboarding was allowed.
In general?
In general. So these rules are now saying, we're tightening it up, and it's saying it's in parks, it's only allowed in designated areas.
Right, and we're gonna designate those areas throughout the parks, and we're working on designating that, because right now, it's, it is, right now, if it's not posted, then it assumes that it's allowed. And there's places, particularly in Will's Park on the trails, that skateboards just shouldn't be allowed because of the visibility and the turns and all of that. So that's why, that's why we added that the designated areas will be posted with proper signage.
And you're.
And it's not our intent, and I'll make sure everybody understands, it's not our intent to stop skateboarding in all of our parks, it's just to make sure that when we, where they are allowed, that it's safe for everybody, including the skateboarders.
So will it be fair to say that, we obviously have a pop-up park on the east side of town, will it be fair to say we'll have a designated area in parks on the west side of town as well? Is that a fair statement or no?
No. Because that's, that's kind of, that's without, without any thought process going through the commission and then back to this group, designate an area. So I'm, I can't, I don't feel like I can do that. I can say we can, we will look for that. We certainly want to try to allow that activity where we can, but to say that we were going to have a designated area on the west side, I don't think I can say that without going through the proper process.
Okay.
Councilman Binder?
I'm confused what you said earlier, because you said it's not our intent to prohibit skateboarding.
Right.
But there's no intent to putting skateboarding on the west side right now?
So, so Councilwoman Richard asked me if we were gonna have a dedicated space for skateboarding on the west side. And so I can't say that we have, because we haven't gone through the process that says we're gonna allow this. So I, I, I think I'm just, I think it's, I'm being careful what I say, because I don't want there, somebody to take what I said and say, oh, we're gonna have a skate park on the west side. It might just simply be an area half the size of this room that says you can skate here in this park, but we're not gonna put ramps up, we're not gonna do this, so.
And that's, and that's fine. I, I personally, just, the conversation we had about skateboarding in downtown and that there's gonna be places and they can skate in the parks.
Absolutely.
There needs to be a place that they can, and I agree, it doesn't have to be a ramp or to the pop-up park, but a place that they can at the park, so.
And if I understood him, I think what he's trying to say is that's his intention, but he doesn't feel, he has the authority to commit at this time that he's going.
And maybe you miss, I didn't mean to say dedicated space on the west side, I meant desig, I thought I said designated space.
Okay, all right, so I think I misheard that.
Okay.
There will, I, I, I'm comfortable to say that there will be places on the west side, west of 400 in our parks where skateboarders will be allowed to skate.
Okay, and that's, that's exactly, yeah.
That's an easier statement for me to make.
I'm gonna grab the floor back. If we could just maybe have the options of where you're looking or that, when this does come up to vote. And then with the scooters, I don't know if I need to see you again for a workshop, if you got the electric vehicles figured out and make the adjustments, and then I'm good.
Okay, well, it, you know, couldn't imagine, the mayor, it sounds like I don't have that figured out.
Okay.
We can certainly look at the scooters as well, and again, I just want to get it right.
Yeah.
And that's why we're, that's why I'm glad it's a workshop rather than a, than a meeting, so.
Yep. Just to clarify on that, I believe Mr. Jones, our city attorney, might have some clarification on that point.
The mayor was correct.
That's why I stopped the meeting to let him say that. I hope you got that clip.
There are some nuances, but generally, that's correct.
So if that helps us avoid another workshop.
I don't think that does.
Okay.
I think, I think we need to.
I gave it my best shot. I understand, but we do need to get it right.
Yep, all right.
Councilman Binder?
And then go back.
Okay, all right.
The training wheels one, I, I've got, I'm going through it right now with two kids. A lot of times they say, don't do the training wheels, do the pedal bikes, so I would just say kids under six would be my recommendation off of, can be, use their bikes on the Greenway. And then, I don't know if this is what Councilman Hypes was saying, but I, I know you're gonna, you're coming up with the Alpha Loop rules. I, I would just keep it consistent within this document, so when you start making the Alpha Loop rules, put it in this, so people don't have two ways to, two sets of rules to find in our list of ordinances, so.
Okay.
When you do, when you do have the Alpha Loop ready to go for rules there, just make sure it's within this section of the ordinance, so we're not, it's not hidden somewhere else.
Gotcha.
Councilman Merkel?
I had spoke all night, so what the hell, I'll get a piece of this. No, and I don't know how you address it, but I appreciate where you are, Mr. Binder. We trained two kids as well in a parking lot, in a, in an office complex, and then taught them how to drive in the same place. There's really nothing more dangerous on the Greenway than somebody trying to teach their kid to ride a bike. I mean, my wife and I walked down there one time, and she literally said something to the, the parents who were from a different culture, so they hadn't quite caught on, but there were people jumping off the path into the grass, so I'm not, I'm not too picky on the six-year-olds on the skate behind the training wheels.
So just, the way the rule reads, it says bikes are not permitted on park trails except the Greenway. So bikes are already allowed on the Greenway, you're already allowed to have your child, you know, on a, on a bike. So this rule is basically saying it is allowed in our parks like Webb Bridge, our trails on Webb Bridge and Will's, if they're under six and have training wheels. That's the only condition that would be allowed. But I'm, Councilman Binder is suggesting that we remove the training wheels and just say children under six on bikes with their parents. Is that what you're saying?
Everybody good with that?
Okay.
Thanks, sir. Is there any other clarifications you needed this evening?
No, I got quite a few, so I'm good.
All right.
So we'll see you back for Chapter Four.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
So, that'll wrap up the workshop for this evening, and we'll move on to public comment. So, if there's anyone here that would like to come forward and speak your piece, now's your opportunity to do so. Seeing no one, we'll close public comment. Do we have any reports this evening? I'm seeing none. So, we'll close reports. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for being here. Look forward to seeing you next time. Meeting is adjourned. Oh, my gosh.